Welcome the members of council, staff, and members of the public to our March 25th council meeting and call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Ms. Smith, please, Deputy Clerk and Human Resource Manager for the roll call, please.
Absolutely. Counselor Clark.
Present.
Counselor Hyatt.
Present.
Counselor O'Hara.
Present.
Counselor Patel.
Present.
Counselor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Loosley.
Present.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask you at this time for the land acknowledgement, please.
Sure. We acknowledge that this land on which we're gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Ottawa, and Potawatomi peoples known, referred to collectively as the Anishnaabig. The town of Petrollia is located on the land associated with the Huron Track Treaty Number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we work, live, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and with the indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask, this time, I would like to request that council declare a conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and complete the necessary paperwork. Seeing none, I have one, and it's on 11B, and it's the Lampton EMS, and it's due to the fact that my son works part-time with the EMS.
And we have two that were filed in advance. We have Deputy Mayor Fields declared a conflict of interest on 15C, Lampton Sanitation, and Counselor Patel has declared a conflict of interest on 15B.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. We'll move on now to the adoption of the agenda before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Patel. Any discussion regarding that agenda before you tonight? Not all call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to the minutes of a regular council meeting held on February the 20th. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Welsh. Any discussion regarding those minutes? Errors or omissions? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, or the, sorry, deputy clerk to read that motion, please.
That the council of the town of Petrollia adopt as circulated minutes of the regular council meeting held on February 20th, 2024.
All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. This will move us on to a moment of reflection. I'll ask that everyone please stand. Thank you. Please be seated. I'll move this on to the council roundtable announcements, and I do rotate that, and tonight it happens to be Deputy Mayor Field first, please.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark.
I have nothing either. Thanks.
Okay. Counselor Hyatt.
Just like to share that the youth talent showcase, I think, went, was received very well by the community. The youth in the committee did a great job with the coordination and working with Director Ellsworth and getting it set up. So we appreciate her support and that's great. Thanks.
That's a great job. Thank you. Counselor Patel.
Thank you through you. Again, the youth talent showcase, the staff went above and beyond to rally this together in a short period of time and make sure everything went off, and I think it was very well received. The attendance was fantastic, and kudos to everybody that was involved. It was a great event, and I'm hoping that they'll do more of it and expand the performers to the community as well.
Great. Thank you. Counsel O'Hara.
I have nothing.
Counsel Welsh.
I have nothing at this time either.
Well, I have a few things, so please bear with me here. I attended a meeting of the Lampton County Council held on Wednesday, February the 21st. The draft budget was distributed after the meeting that requested a 5.5% increase in 2024. I also attended the volunteer recognition dinner at the Legion with Deputy Mayor Field, Counselors O'Hara and Clark, and on Wednesday, February 21st. It was my favorite night of the year that we give back a little bit to our amazing volunteers and thank them for their contribution, as well as recognize some special volunteers as follows. The 2022 community partner was Heidi Student, the 2023 community partners were Stuart and Cindy Sharp, and the 2023 community partner was Jenny Williams. Special thanks to Larissa Ellsworth, Julie Bollock, Tara Wagner, and all the other staff involved in organizing this amazing event. Also, thanks to the Legion ladies auxiliary for a great meal. Everyone had a great time. I also took part in the St. Clair Region Conservation Authority annual meeting on Thursday, February 22nd, at the Don Yefemia Community Center for my last meeting. I was presented with my five-year service award, and Counselor Ross O'Hara took my seat as a representative from the town of Petrollia in the future. It was a good event with a large turnout. I was invited to take part on a Zoom special meeting with members of the Sarnia Research Park on Friday, February 23rd. Mrs. Laura Oblinus from Stellato gave a presentation on innovation ecosystems as economic development drivers that are provided to be very, was provided to be very interesting and worthwhile. I attended a meeting with the representatives from the Blue Water Health and Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO, CAO Treasurer on Friday, March the 1st, and I will keep council informed. I also attended the Petrollia Youth Talent Showcase at Victoria Hall on Friday, March 1st, and brought greetings on behalf of council and staff of the town of Petrollia. Counselor Deb Patel and Counselor Chad Hyatt, as previously mentioned, they're the appointed members to the Youth Advisory Committee. They took part in the event. Congratulations to the Youth Advisory Committee and all the volunteers and those involved in the event. Special thanks to the LCVI art teachers that organized the visual art show and the council chambers at the same time. Also, special thanks to all the sponsors that contributed to the event. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, was also in attendance. It was a great success and a good time by all. I attended the Lampton County Budget Deliberations on Wednesday, March the 6th. It was, the budget was approved, including a 5.5% increase. I voted against the budget increase and felt that it should have been reduced to four, four and a half percent. There was no cuts or reductions in the $283 million budget and was finished in two hours. I also attended the Third Annual Awards Gala Southwest Apprenticeship Network Event at the Hidden Hills Golf and Country Club on March the 7th at the Dover Center. I brought greetings on behalf of council and staff and congratulated the recipients in their role to the development skilled tradespeople through training and mentoring, and I don't mind saying there were several winners from Lampton County because it included Lampton and Chatham Kent. I took part in the State of Lampton municipalities with all the mayors, hosted by the Sarnia Lampton Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday, March the 19th at the Wyoming Fairgrounds. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CEO Treasurer, was also present. It was a great success with a sold-out crowd, and everything went very well. I attended the Sarnia Lampton Chamber of Commerce After Five Event at the Big Fish on Wednesday, March 20th. It was a great event with a large turnout. I spoke and welcomed everyone to take part in the After Five Event to be held in Petrollia on April 17th, and I would also like to encourage all of council to come out and take part if possible. Mr. Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, the municipalities' mayors and staff of Clinton, Wyoming, and Warwick, and I had an online meeting with Mr. Peter Fragescatos, Parliamentary Secretary Housing, Infrastructure and Communities on the National Housing Crisis and the Housing Accelerator Fund, which is called HAF. The meeting took place on Thursday, March 21st, and was a very successful meeting. Special thanks to Mr. Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, for preparing and organizing this event. I attended a meeting with the IODE who presented a check for the $25,000 to go towards the Victoria Hall renovations in celebration of their 75th anniversary and Petrollia celebrating 150 years. Mr. Rick Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, was also present. This is a very important project to Victoria Hall that includes the theater. That's all I have. All right, moving on, we will go to the representatives and review regarding the different committees, and tonight we start with the Petrollia Heritage Advisory Committee, and I'd like to ask Counselor Welsh or Counselor Field, which one of you would like to take the lead on this one?
Sure.
Um, I'll move that we accept the minutes, so if I get a second, I'll speak to the minutes.
Girl Ken, I'll need a second for that. Seconded by Counselor Field. Okay, this is Counselor Welsh. Go ahead.
We elected a new chair, Sarah Irwin, so that's very nice, a young person from our community who is possibly even more keen on Petrollia history than myself.
Oh.
And she also introduced a new idea for community engagement, and we're going to discuss it further at our April meeting, so it's kind of exciting. So we'll, more on that as we develop it.
Thank you, Counselor Welsh. It's good news. We'll go to Parks and Rec, or first of all, sorry, we'll vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor of approving those heritage minutes, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. I have Counselor Clark and Counselor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead on this? Okay, Counselor Hyatt, go ahead.
So I think a lot of the minutes are pretty self-explanatory, lots of updates from all the events that will be happening this year in terms of Parks and Recs. I guess kind of the big thing is the bandshell. We can all see the cinder block walls starting to take shape, so I think that'll be great to support a lot of the events that are happening in town this year.
Okay, thank you.
May I get a second for that?
No, we haven't got a mover yet. Do you want to move that, the motion? Okay, I'll need a second for that motion. Counselor Clark, any discussion regarding those minutes? All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. That'll bring us to the Petrollia Youth Advisory Committee, and we have Counselor Patel and Counselor Hyatt. Which one would like to take the lead on this?
So, thank you through you. So the minutes we have, there's a little bit of difference with, with this particular meeting. So what we find with a brand-new committee of Petrollia and it being a youth-driven committee, that the, some of the boundaries or regulations that typically apply to committee isn't necessarily working for our youth. So we have, have a couple of changes that we'd like to make. So what we're finding is, as we're attracting these wonderful, ambitious, creative youth, they also have other ambitious, creative ideas, and that their time is, is spread between that and their schooling, and we certainly don't want to interrupt that. However, we also have an influx of the senior students that are leading a lot of the events are also going away to school. So the timing for applications and to put those new people or new youth in place doesn't really work with the current timeframe. So we'd like a bit of fluctuation with the numbers on the committee so that we always have a full committee with community members as well as the youth. The senior youth of, there'll be a bit of overlap at some point where they can mentor some of the young ones, which is fantastic. And so, you know, the numbers look excessive, but that would be the overlap period as they're going away to school and whatnot. So there is a couple of requests for council to consider changing the numbers. We also had a resignation from Mary Vanderburg, which was unfortunate, and we certainly want to reach out to fill the adult community members as well, so that there's a really good balance and so that we can meet Quorum to make some great decisions.
Thank you, Counsel Patel. In regards to number two, that is allowed automatically, so we don't have to bother doing that. But I, I'd like to ask the deputy clerk just about cleaning up the wording for that motion to allow for item one. Could you read that motion, please?
Absolutely. So I have drafted a motion here to reflect that, and that is that the council of the town of Petrollia endorse as presented the minutes of the Petrollia Youth Advisory Committee held on March 19th, 2024, and that the terms of reference be amended to reflect the recommendation of the Petrollia Youth Advisory Committee. Town rate players 18-plus be changed from up to four to three to five, and two, that youth being, youth between 12 and 18 years of age be changed from up to five to seven to 10, and that a call for application be issued to fill the community member position created with the resignation of Mary Vanderburg, and to fill the additional positions established by the change in terms of reference.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. So basically, it's just incorporating what they've asked for. All right. I'll need a motion to put that on the floor for further discussion. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Patel. Any further discussion on that motion before you, read by our deputy clerk? And that, that'll be, the new bylaw will be amended accordingly. Okay, all those in favor of approving that, opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us on to the Petrollia North Enniskillan Fire Committee. We have Counselor Chad Hyatt and Counselor Ross O'Hara. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead? Counselor O'Hara, go ahead.
Again, at our last meeting, Counselor Hyatt was elected as Chair of Fire Management. That's good. We, Petrollia hasn't had a chair for a number of years, so it's good for the change there. And our Fire Management Committee is meeting next Wednesday to discuss the new fire vehicle again, and hopefully we'll come back to council with a recommendation from that meeting.
Thank you, Counsel O'Hara. That's great, and I'm pleased too. Congratulations, Counselor Hyatt, and we certainly, it's nice to have Petrollia in the chair because we should take a turn. The only thing I wanted to mention was a little bit of a concern regarding the $85,400 over expenditure at the Fire Management Committee. I would like to try and keep that under control. Now, I know only 60% of that is ours, but we try and keep the budget within that control. All right, so there's a motion there. I'd like to, would you like to move that, Counsel O'Hara?
I'll move that.
Okay, I'll need a second, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Any discussion regarding those, those minutes? All those in favor, opposed, that carries. That'll take us to the Emergency Management Committee. We have Deputy Mayor Joel Field and Counselor Hyatt. Which one of you gentlemen would like to take the lead on that one?
I think I missed the last meeting.
Good. Counselor Hyatt, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so Brian Clark, Chair, called a special meeting related to the solar eclipse to share some information that's happening with emergency response related to solar eclipse. Director Ellsworth prepared a short video, I think, that was posted around and shared with some information related to solar eclipse safety, et cetera, for, for the residents in the town. So it's kind of the highlight.
Thank you, Counsel Hyatt. I will ask Chief Cousins on the last couple items on fire management. Do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll need a motion to put that on the floor. Okay, Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion regarding those minutes, that special meeting? All those in favor of approving those minutes, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to the Committee of Adjustment and Property Standards. We have Counselor Deb Patel. Counselor Patel, go ahead.
Thank you through you. So we did have a minor variance approved. There was lots of conversation around that as far as the setback, regulations, the county's request, as well as the members involved. They did come to an agreement that was acceptable on all parties, and it was, it was passed.
Okay, thank you. All right, would you like to move those minutes, Counsel Patel? Okay, moved by Counsel Patel, seconded by Counselor Deputy Mayor Field, and I'll ask the clerk to read, or sorry, the deputy clerk to read that motion, please.
Absolutely. That the council of the town of Petrollia receive and file Counsel Patel's update on the Committee of Adjustment meeting held on March 6, 2024.
Any discussion regarding those minutes? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That moves us on to Municipal Services and Traffic. Counselor Hyatt, you're up again.
Okay, thank you. There's a few reports, obviously, on the agenda related to some of the stuff that Director Thompson is working on. On top of that, compost passes available downstairs. The backyard compost project will happen again this year, so you can buy tickets downstairs for those backyard composters to be picked up at a later date. I think the tender for Tank Street is closed, so next council meeting, we should be seeing some recommendations come forward from that, and I believe works are ongoing with BM Ross for the sidewalk study project for Maple Street and Garfield.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Hyatt. Would you like to move that motion? Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Yep, that is that the council of the town of Petrollia receive and file Counselor Hyatt's update on municipal services happenings.
Any discussion from council? Counselor O'Hara.
On the Tank Street, obviously, it's at the engineering stage, right, or they're reviewing it, or?
Through your worship, that's correct.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Were we on budget, or?
We will be on budget. I talked to the MIG today, the engineer, and it looks like we are, will be on budget, correct?
Okay.
Thank you. That's good. All right.
Yes, yes, we read that one.
All those in favor of that motion, opposed, that motion carries. That goes on to Planning and Development. We have Deputy Mayor Joel Field and Counselor Liz Welsh. Which one would like to take the lead on that? Counsel, Deputy Mayor, go ahead.
Still a very active committee, meeting on a regular basis. We have several site plans that have been circulated to various, various agencies for comment, which is a good move forward. We have several zoning bylaw amendments and official plan amendments that are coming forward shortly.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Yeah, we'll have one on the next council meeting, I believe, on the 8th. Would you like to move that motion, Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Welsh? I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Sure, and that is that the council of the town of Petrollia receive and file Deputy Mayor Field's update on planning and development happenings.
Any further discussion from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to Correspondence for Information. We have A to E. I'll ask for a motion to accept those unless there's any separate ones council would like to pull out. Counselor Hyatt.
I would like to bring out, sorry, 10B letter from Mayor Broad, RE, future access to natural gas.
Okay. All right, so I'll ask for a motion from council to go from A to E except for B, and we'll deal with B separately. Moved by Counselor Welsh? Oh, did you have someone, something else you'd like to pull out?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
We could pull out D also, please.
Okay, D, pull out, okay. So then we will go now from A to E, but we'll pull out B and D. So I'll ask for a motion to receive and file those, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll have the clerk to read that motion, please.
Sure, that the council of the town of Petrollia receive and file correspondence items 10A through E except B and D.
Okay, any discussion from council? All those in favor of receiving and file those, opposed, that motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to B first. Counselor Hyatt, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so there is a agenda item, yes, 11A, which touches on a very similar topic to 10B, letter from Mayor Broad. I think the, the motion that was brought forward by Don Yefemia is more fitting to what the municipality should be sending forward as opposed to the recommendation that may come through 11A.
Okay.
From the builders associations. That's why I would like to bring it forward.
So you'd like to move that, this council support the letter from Mayor Broad, RE, the future access to natural gas. I'll need a second for that, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any discussion regarding that motion? I'll ask the deputy clerk to read that motion for us, please. I'll give you a few minutes to get that ready.
Yep, that was that the council of the town of Petrollia support the letter from Mayor Broad regarding the future of natural gas.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries.
Sorry, may I get again who it was seconded by?
Counsel Clark.
Thank you.
We'll go to D. I'll turn it over to Counselor Welsh.
I would like to move that we support Chatham Kent in all of their efforts. They are going to oppose and reject any and all applications that will allow York One proposals and basically for the same reasons that they are, rather than going into detail, for the same reasons that they are going to oppose and reject, ask that the MOE reject all of those applications.
Okay. I'll need a second for that, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll give the deputy clerk a minute to put that maybe together, and I'll have her read that motion so we're all clear in what we're voting for.
And I guess that maybe should also go to the county since they're asking for supplemental information to send along with their suggestions and comments.
And that's good. Go ahead.
That the council of the town of Petrollia support the council of Chatham Kent in their efforts to, what would you like me to put there?
Yeah, what we can do is we can clean that up according to what's written here, so just to save some time.
Yeah, just trying to pull it from the side there.
So if council, we've all got a copy of that in front of you. We will have that, and a copy will also be sent to Lampton County.
Yeah, and that our letter of support be circulated to Lampton.
Okay.
In their efforts, any and all.
They have voted at their own council meeting to reject and oppose any and all amendments that come to the C of As with respect to York One.
All, yeah, in their efforts to reject and oppose all amendments that come. Yes, York One.
All right, I think we all understand what we're doing here. Did we have a move and a second on that?
I had moved by Counselor Welsh and seconded by Counselor Hyatt.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further discussion from council regarding that motion? All those in favor, opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to number 11, which is 11A from the Sarnia Lampton Home Builders, and you have a motion, motion before you, and I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor, if you want some action. Deputy Mayor Field?
Yeah, I move that we receive and file, in light of the support of the Don Yefemia one, so.
Okay, I'll need a second for that, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the deputy clerk to read that motion to receive and file, please.
Sorry, we had a different motion drafted there.
It's okay, yeah.
That the council of the town of Petrollia receive and file the report from Lampton Home Builders.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, opposed, that motion carries. I'll ask Deputy Mayor to take the chair, please.
Sorry, I hit my thumb on it. Here it is right now. Yes, we have Lampton EMS follow-up, which has a letter requesting a letter of support or comment. They did a presentation which answered a lot of our questions. I think it was a positive, but I think possibly the outcome of that, maybe we should have had a motion at that time. So is there anyone that wants to, Counselor Welsh, bring a motion forward to support that letter, and Counselor Hyatt? Any discussion from that? I think it's a well-planned plan, and, you know, I think our endorsement is, is. is what the county was looking for as well, so. No other comments? All those in favor?
Would you like me to read that motion?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's okay. That the Council of the Town of Petrolia support the County of Lampton's EMS master plan as presented to council in February 2024.
Great. All those in favor? Sorry, a little rusty in the chair. Thank you.
I'm a little rusty here.
Felt like somebody in the audience was staring at me.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Didn't even warm up the chair. Okay, we'll move on. Had passus pen. We'll move on now to the delegations and presentation. We have, first, we have Mr. Sam Smith from Aqua. If you'd like to come forward, please. And I just want to mention to council before he starts, we all have received a copy of his report, and I'm sure every councilor has read it, but I'll turn the meeting over to you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, your worship. Evening, everybody. Do a quick review. I always like to start with Schedule 11, the start, the, the first, uh, letter portion that's, uh, sent to Director Thompson. Attached is a 2023 summary report for the Petrolia Drinking Water System. The report is completed in accordance with Schedule 22 of OREG 17003 under the Safe Drinking Water Act. The summaries report is to be provided, uh, to members of council. Please ensure the distribution by March 31st, 2024. Attached also is a copy of the 2020, 2023 annual report for the Petrolia Drinking Water System required under Section 11 of OREG 170. Section 12 of OREG 170 requires both the summary report and the annual report to be made available for inspection by any member of the public during normal business hours without charge. These reports should be made available for inspection at the office of the municipality or at a location that is reasonably convenient to the users of the water system. So inside these reports, it gives a pretty general overview of the drinking water system for, uh, Petrolia. Section one is just an overview of the system that is yet to change. We're hoping for changes maybe, uh, late 2024, early 2025 with the addition of, uh, the upgrades to the, the low lift. Um, we did, uh, for section two, our compliance summary, and I can get into that after the, the two, um, reports, but our, our annual inspection, we received a rating of 99.34. So very, very close to 100%, and I'll get into the, the main reasons, or the main reason beyond that, that it was a, it was an administrative error. Uh, we did have an AWQI, which is an adverse water quality indicator, um, on November 14th, um, with one total qualiform. We, it was most likely lab or operator error when sampling. There was no major concerns. It was a, a resample 24 hours and everything was fine on that. As far as flows go, um, we are at 29.7% of the capacity, the total water-taking permit, so the permit to take water, and we're at 30.9 of the rate of capacity of the facility, so there's lots of room to grow there. Um, and that kind of sums up Schedule 22. So I'll jump over to the Section 11 of the, uh, annual reports. So this is much of the same. This breaks down a little bit about where the money was spent. You know, monetary expenses, capital expenses, expenses. We did intake, uh, we did inspect the intake. We did our, um, annual strainer repairs. We replaced and upgraded all the flow meters and pressure transmitters at the water treatment plant, so that was a big upgrade, made it much more reliable, um, for reporting and for compliance things. Um, we do have to maintain our low lifts, even though they will be replaced, we do have to maintain them, so that was done. And we did some valve repairs and hydro repairs out in the distribution system. Getting into the sampling, um, like I said, we did have the one, um, AWQI on our bacteriological samples. Turbidity's were fine on the racks, all chlorine residuals were fine. Our residual management samples were good. Our lead sampling, so we are actually exempt from lead, lead sampling, actual lead sampling. What we do do is we do alkalinity and pH, uh, within the system. Those numbers are, um, rate where there should be. Alkalinity and pH are about, uh, about neutrals, where, which was where you want them to be. We no longer take lead results in the distribution system as we are exempt after years and years of taking samples and finding that there was no lead in the system, so. Just wanted to take an opportunity to point that out. Um, when you get into the organics, there's a lot of stuff there. We're not going to go through all of those. One thing, um, I will point out is HAs, which is alacelic acid, and THM, which is trihalomethanes. These are, um, indicators of, um, so they, when chlorine combines with organics in the water, um, they produce these, uh, indicators, and these are, uh, known to be carcinogenic, and so that there is, there is a very low limit, um, that they put on these, um, on these samples. And you'll see the, it's a running average, and, uh, the Town of Petrolia and their drinking water system is well, well below the, the limits for these, so, uh, another thing to point out there. And that's about it for this Section 11. Any questions on that before I jump over to the inspection report?
Okay, any questions from council? Oh, continue on. Thank you.
So our inspection report this year, or last year, uh, like I said, we received a 99.34%. Our 19 compliance was a administrative error on a, what's called a Form 1, um, that we have to produce these documents and have them, uh, available for inspection when called upon. There's a bit of miscommunication, uh, between Aqua, the town, and the engineers. We did get it signed by the town, and, uh, um, in time, they have to be submitted before the water main is, um, connected to the system. Unfortunately, the engineers were delayed on getting their portion back, so their date was after that. Moving forward, what we have done, and, uh, with the help of Director Thompson, uh, Aqua will not, um, connect a new water service or new water system to the existing system without this Form 1 in hand. Um, there's a bit of disconnect between, um, the operators and the administrative side of things. The operators are out there, boots on the ground, trying to get this stuff, uh, uh, in operation for the contractors and for the town. They're not always looking for this, um, this Form 1. We have added it to our, um, commissioning forms that you have to check it off, uh, before you can move on any further, um, to ensure that the Form 1 is there, so, uh, shouldn't be a problem going forward. We've changed our paperwork to, uh, to make sure that this doesn't happen again. The one recommendation that came out of the, um, the inspection report is, uh, a screening on our air vents and overflows at the Mandaman Reservoir. This is just an upgrade in regulations. We weren't in, out of compliance before, these tanks aren't that old. And what they have is on the overflows, they have what's called a duct bill, and it's essentially a valve, a, a check valve that only opens one way. When these were built and installed, that was the, um, was the practice, that was good enough. Now they all actually want another screen behind that. So in 2024, we will get those installed and, uh, be ready for the next inspection and be up to regulation. And that's really all the comments I have out of the inspection report.
Well, thank you, uh, Mr. Smith, and before I open it up to council, I just want to say I read that, a detailed report, well done.
Thank you.
And I think Petrolia is quite proud of our water system, and I think we've all had a chance to tour it, and it's even more exciting with the new water line we're extending out into the lake, but I want to congratulate you and the organization for what you're doing, and we're very proud of the quality of our water.
Thank you, yeah, it should be. Thank you.
All right, I'll open it up to council. Any questions from council? Counselor Wells?
Surprise, I know. Um, so the halocetic and trihalomethanes, that you said they were higher at one particular location?
Counselor Wells, you'll go through me, please.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a reason for that?
You speak to that, please?
Yeah, sir, sir, through you, Mr., um, Mayor. Uh, so we purposely look for areas that will be higher. We want to pick the most vulnerable areas that will give us the highest readings for these samples, because we want to ensure if we, so how it works is the longer that the chlorine is in contact with organics in the water, the higher that these THMs and HAs will be. So what we do is we pick the areas that we think the water has the longest retention time, that'll be in that pipe for the longest, so that we know that, okay, if it's really good here, then it'll be really good everywhere else. So that's why we, you'll see areas that are higher than other areas, but that's by design. We're trying to find the areas that have the highest.
Thank you, Mr. Swift. Counselor Wells, you have a rebuttal? Are you okay with that?
I have other questions.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
So it, it talks about the, um, the report talks about the valves being exercised regularly, and, but it says in the report that only 20% were exercised annually, and I'm just wondering why that is. I can't remember the exact wording in the report now.
Mr. Smith, can you speak to that, please?
Absolutely, through your chair. Um, so that, that 20% comes from our agreement with the Town of Petrolia and Aqua. We actually, the, the number's closer to 100%. Uh, we, we exercise, it's just a number that was arbitrarily put in the agreement between Aqua and the town. But that number is, we, 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 um, try to get every single valve in the Town of Petrolia every single year. They, so the, the ministry would be taking that number from the, from the Aqua, uh, Aqua Town of Petrolia agreement.
Okay, Counselor Wells, you okay with that, or you have another question? Go ahead. It's all right.
Um, I'm just wondering how we are doing with respect to leak detection and repair.
Go ahead, can you speak to that, please?
Yeah, so we annually, I recommend a, um, annual leak detection to, uh, Director Thompson. We perform that leak detection. There might be one or two small leaks on fire hydrant leads, and they were fixed immediately. As far as the big main breaks, those show up like that. They're not, they're not a thing that just slows, slowly builds. They break and they break big, as we probably all know. But we haven't had many, uh, and we didn't have many in 2023. You guys have a great water main replacement program where you guys are, uh, always trying to replace, almost every year, I'd say, replacing cast iron water mains, and I've been kicking around here for about seven years, and it's gotten better every single year, and 2023 was probably our best.
That's good, thank you. Counselor Wells, you okay with that?
That's everything for me.
I'll open it up to the rest of council. Any questions? If not, uh, Mr. Smith, thank you for coming to address council. It's a great report. At this time, I, we have a motion before us. I'd like to ask for a move and a seconder to put that motion on the floor. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That the Council of the Town of Petrolia endorse as presented the Aqua, uh, presented by Aqua, the 2023 annual report, Brights Grove Water Treatment Plant, and that the 2023 MOE inspection reports be received.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That'll bring us on to the next item, which is from Jacobs. I'll ask Mr. Bloomfield to come forward, please. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to present the 2023 Annual Wastewater Report for the Town of Petrolia, chaired by Jacobs. Pretty easygoing, light year. A couple incidences, uh, with some overages with phosphorus, but that was mostly due to, uh, some operational tasks that we were taking. And unlike Mr. Smith, we don't have an annual inspection, uh, so we just submit the exact same report to the MECP, um, and it's pretty laid out.
Just, okay, the, before, and, and again, thank you for your report, it's quite detailed, too. I have a couple of questions before I open it up to council, and that's in regards to the, uh, and I think it's the influent flows for 2023, 11A, and it's on the, um, December where it spiked way up. If you look at reporting 11, the ECA schedule?
Yep.
Is there a reason why that jumped way up in December like that?
Uh, mostly just because we would get snow, it would melt, and then it would end up in the, in the waste plant. Kind of having more of that in the past years.
Okay, and that's fine, it just looks all across, you're pretty well even, all of a sudden, it just, the other thing I wanted to ask before I open it up to council is in regards to number two, the ammonia chart for February and June. If you want to just take a quick look at that, and it, it jumped way up then, and I just wondered if there was a.
Yeah, that's.
A reason for that.
That's due to the, the same reason. When we get those big surges of water, um, it flows through the plant faster, uh, therefore it doesn't give enough time for the plant to actually treat it.
So it's not a concern really at all?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Council, any questions? Counselor Wells?
You knew it. It's one of my favorite reports every year. Through you. I was a bit concerned about the E coli counts, uh, when the UV lighting is off. I know we discussed the UV lighting last year, and the added expense to turn on, is there a concern with that?
Do you like to speak to that, please? Go ahead.
Sir, your honor, if I may, um, we have permission from the MECP to do that, and actually, in our new ECA, uh, that came into effect in July, uh, it has actually been written into the ECA to grant us permission to do that. They take into consideration the receiving stream, uh, when they grant those kinds of things, and it isn't uncommon, it's not that common, um, but, um, E coli, when it hits those cold waters, become inactive anyways, um, therefore, it's not overly a big issue. It actually, we don't have to take those E coli samples, but we do anyways, just to keep, uh, monitoring on those as well.
Counselor Wells, do you have any rebuttal? Are you okay with that?
But I have other questions.
Go ahead.
Um, are the fats, oil, and grease or fog an issue at the plant, and how is it remedied? And should we be doing more education to help minimize that?
Mr. Bloomfield, will you speak to that, please?
So currently at the plant itself, uh, fats, oil, and greases, uh, don't seem to be an issue. We do have several pump stations that we routinely clean every year that do have some buildup on them, um, but at the actual plant itself, we don't really see a lot of it. And continuing public education is really, but kind of the best course that the town could take, um, just making sure that people know that, um, dumping fats and greases and stuff down the drain will affect, uh, the sewer system, the waste plant, as well as their own laterals. I'm sure you experienced that as, for lateral cleanouts with oils and greases buildup in there, and it, it'll happen very quickly, too, so. But at the plant, no, we don't really have too much of an issue currently with that, so.
Counselor Wells, rebuttal, or are you okay with that?
No rebuttal, more questions.
Go ahead.
Where all the leachate testing parameters met?
So.
Mr. Bloomfield, speak to that, please.
Sir, your honor, um, currently the town doesn't have a sewer use bylaw, therefore, all the parameters we test for have no actual limits. I believe that is in the works, um, but, um, we monitor it quarterly, um, and everything seems to be well within an acceptable range. To give some kind of clarity on how much they're sending us, um, they're only allowed to send us 100 meters cubed a day, uh, and that equates out to about 2%, 2% to 3% of our daily flow, so in all reality, it's kind of a drop in the bucket. But, uh, in the past, we have had issues there, um, but we have since worked with waste management and got those taken care of, and it hasn't seemed to been an issue since.
Mr. Wells, rebuttal, or just, are you okay with that?
I'm good with that, and I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
They, I noticed that there, there was, in the report, mentioned that there is an increase in the solids due to the leachate also, and I'm wondering if there should be some sort of additional filtration before it gets into the plant or at waste management's end to prevent those additional solids from coming into the wastewater treatment plant.
Bloomfield, go ahead.
So, as in the previous, uh, question, uh, there is elevated solids, but it's nothing that. uh, there is elevated solids, but it's nothing that we're seeing as an impact to the waste plant. Um, by the time it's getting to us, it is at the furthest end of our system. So by the time it's getting to us, it's so combined with everything else that, um, it's not overly an issue.
That is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wells. Uh, Deputy Mayor Field.
Um, just a comment, great report.
Excellent.
Um, I just wanted to commend you. Um, in August, when we had the large storm, um, I was with, uh, Mr. Thompson. We went for a drive around because there was a lot of concerns with the amount of water that was coming up. Um, it made me a little nervous, you know, filling in as the acting mayor at the time. Um, but in discussions with yourself, we ran into you while we were out and about. Um, you had a plan, you were implementing the plan, you were working through it. So it was good that it was mentioned in here, but, um, it's just, uh, it's a relief to know that we have professionals looking after, um, that system, and it could have been pretty devastating if we had lost a lot of the lift stations and pumps, and, but you had a plan. So I just want to commend you that, you know, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Any other councils? Counselor Hyatt.
Uh, thank you through you. Just wondering if you can give us, uh, some background of what the ECA amendment actually supported.
Yeah, so
Mr. Bloomfield, go ahead.
Chair, if I may. Um, the new ECA, um, was to cover three, uh, kind of points. Um, one being the UV system, that we are allowed to turn that off between, uh, the end of November to the beginning of April. The next was, um, our virtual flow meter. So the facility doesn't have an actual effluent flow meter. Um, how our effluent number is generated, um, is we take the influent flow reading, and we subtract the recirculation rate and the wasting rate, and that generates our effluent volume. Um, and that, that's, again, pretty commonplace. Um, but it wasn't in the actual wording of the original ECA. Um, the other, um, was to allow for sewage to be, uh, dumped at the facility under an emergency circumstance.
Counselor Hyatt, are you okay with that?
Yep.
Go ahead, another question, go ahead.
In terms of the E coli testing, uh, that we do on a, looks like a weekly basis, is that internal testing or external testing?
That's external testing. It has to be completed by a, um, a certified lab.
Like, there is some spikes that seem to happen, you know, every once in a while. Maybe in the month of, you know, September, for example, there's a, you know, a reading that's like 2.2 and then 1800. Is there, like, an opportunity to do internal testing that's maybe not used for the report, but it could at least provide immediate feedback that, you know, if there was an issue like that, it might not take three days or four days to get the information back?
Go ahead.
If I may, um, we don't currently have the capability to do that at the plant right now. Um, however, uh, if you've noticed those kind of spikes, uh, that was an issue, uh, found with the operation, um, where our effluent flow was actually over the level of the UV lights um, because of a power blip causing our effluent gate to actually fault, and it faults, um, closed, which is what you would want it to do. Unfortunately, if the operator doesn't catch that, um, then that level in that channel's too high. Um, and there is effluent water that does go over those UV bulbs. Um, so what we have done, um, is that's part of our daily check now. When you go out, is to check that valve and make sure it hasn't faulted. And it's, it's really easy for it to fault. Any kind of short little interruption in power will cause that, so. But that, since we discovered that, it seems to be an on issue.
Counselor Hyatt, are you okay with that, or do you have a rebuttal?
No, that's good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm done thinking.
And I, I just want to remind council, too, make sure you speak right into the mic so it can be heard, uh, when we record this. All right, um, I'll ask, first of all, I'll thank you for coming to address council. And, uh, you can sit down and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Chad, I'll ask, do you have a motion before you? I'll ask for a move in a second. It moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
Uh, that the Council of the Town of Petrolia Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, deputy clerk.
That the Council of the Town of Petrolia endorse as presented by Jacobs, the 2023 Wastewater Treatment Plant Annual Report.
Any other discussion? Now, I just want to mention, I'm really pleased that both water and wastewater, we have all the capacity we need for a number of years. So for the developers that are listening, we have no problem coming to the Town of Petrolia, and we can access the water treatment and sewage, uh, without any problem.
We can double or triple our wa, our water and wastewater.
Well, that's great. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us on to community announcement, recognition, awards. You have a motion in front of you. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the deputy clerk to read that motion, please.
That is that the Council of the Town of Petrolia receive as information only the March 25th, 2024 community announcements as presented.
Uh, Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, nothing at this time, your worship. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from council? If not, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll bring us to the first opportunity for the public to address council. I'll ask the deputy clerk, do we have anyone registered?
We do not have anyone registered in advance.
Thank you, and I'll ask if there's anyone present that would like to address council, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to the financial accounts. Uh, we have a, uh, the, uh, accounts payable listing, no known pecuniary interest. I'll ask for a move in a second for that motion, please. Moved by, uh, by Counselor O'Hara, seconded by Counselor Clark. I will ask Counselor O'Hara, who looks after the accounts, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Thank you. I'll ask the deputy clerk to read that motion.
That the Council of the Town of Petrolia receive as information only the December 31, 2023 to March 15, 2024 general financial accounts.
And again, as council has noticed, we have separated these because of pecuniary interest from some counselors. So it'll make it a lot easier. All right, any discussion on the motion on the floor? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll take us to B, which is the accounts paid listing, pecuniary interest regarding Counselor Patel. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. Um, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That the Council of the Town of Petrolia receive as information only the December 31st, 2023 to March 15, 2024 No One Stands Alone accounts.
Any discussion regarding that account? If not, all those in favor of approving that? Opposed, that motion carries. And I'll just note Counselor Patel's back in her seat. And Counselor, that the Deputy Mayor Field has, has stepped out. I'll ask for a move in a second to put the next motion on the floor for regarding Deputy Mayor Field's pecuniary interest. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, deputy clerk to read that motion, please.
That the Council of the Town of Petrolia receive as information only the December 31st, 2023 to March 15, 2024 Lampton Sanitation accounts.
And I will ask one more time, Counselor O'Hara, do you have anything you'd like to add on those accounts?
No, I don't.
Thank you. Um, I'll ask, did I get a move in a second for that?
You did, yes.
I did, okay. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. And we'll note Deputy Mayor Field is back in his chair. That'll move us on to reports. We have a report from Mr. Mike Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the R1, R2 RFQ results for 2024. R1, R2 RF results, yes. Um, I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion before you on the floor. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. Um, I will ask the clerk to read that motion, and I have something I want to add after the motion. But, Field, the deputy clerk would read that, please.
Sure, that the Council of Town Petrolia receive the report of, uh, the Director of Operations dated March 25th, 2024 regarding the R1, R2 quotes, and that the R1, R2 projects be awarded to SEVCON Construction in the amount of 47,873 excluding HST.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, oh, Councilor Wells.
Just noting quite a difference in the, the quotes for those jobs. You know, from, the, the second one is more than double, and the third one is even more. It's quite shocking.
It certainly were. Mr. Thompson, would you like to speak to that at all?
Uh, through your worship, I, I don't know why that is. Um, Paul, the work foreman, met, um, all the individuals on site separately, showed them all the locations, the three locations, and I waited for their emails with the prices. And, um, those are them, so I, I'm not sure. I can't explain it, but I'm happy with
Works in our favor, it's good.
Yeah, I'm happy with, uh, SEVCON, so.
Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. And before we move on, since it's related to this motion, as council noted, there was 27,000 left over under budget. I'd like to request that council consider a motion to have that money spent on further repairs to first half, uh, under Mr. Thompson's direction. Counselor Wells.
I believe, did we not already allocate that to sidewalks in our budget?
Now, I'm talking about the additional money left over from here. I don't think we talked about it.
Okay, I thought that was what we had talked about.
If, if I'm incorrect, please let me know. If not, because we're under budget by the 27,000, and I was thinking about the alley, but I think, uh, Mr. Thompson stated that there needs to be some additional work on first half. And I'd like to, uh, council to consider a motion directing Mr. Thompson to spend the additional 27,000 on first half. Or at least come back with a report.
What, what is the additional work?
Pardon me?
What's the additional work that you're referring to?
I'll ask Mr. Thompson just to speak to some additional work in first half.
There is, uh, through your worship, there is some additional, uh, spot repairs on first half. There's some sections that are, are quite bad, in particular, right off Petrolia line as you head south on first half, first 50 or 60 feet. And then there's another section, um, closer to, uh, uh, Phidix, it's not called Phidix anymore, but, um, in there. And then obviously, the, the, um, section at the end that's in the report, um, just north of Garden Crescent. So, um, I mean, off the top of my head, that's a couple of spots where I can think of. Um, I know the COO and myself were down there last year when the gentleman came to council. Um, and, um, looking at first half, and there's some bad spots, so it's up to council.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it will certainly help. But again, it's up to council, but I'll need a motion to put that on the floor for further discussion. Then we can vote. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll open it up for more discussion. And I think we should probably have a, a report come back from Mr. Thompson regarding the, uh, $27,000. And if it's a little more to be taken out of the road maintenance budget, so be it. Any other discussion from council? Counselor Patel.
Thank you through you. I would like to just see some options that we have for the allocation of the funds. It might not seem like a lot, but it is a lot of money. So if there's some other things we're over on budget on some, I'd just like some options that we could discuss, um, and come back before we decide tonight.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I think what we'll do is, is have the motion just directed to Mr. Thompson for a report back, and then council can decide if you want to proceed with it or not. Is that okay with council? So we'll direct it to Mr. Thompson for a report back on, uh, the, the repairs on first half up to the $27,000.
Just a question through your worship. Um, so you'd like me to get in contact with SEVCON again, or all three? Or can we assume that they would be the cheapest? And, and I just want to be clear that, um, you mean what you want me to do? Um, so
It's, yeah, I think
Just some clarity on Counselor Patel, what she's asking, um,
Yeah.
in reference to the repairs.
Yeah, okay, Counselor Clark.
I, I think maybe if you could just come back with a report on where the money's best spent first. And then we can decide whether to proceed, right? You know, your crew knows where the, where the bad areas are, that maybe where that money is best spent. So I think if you were to come back to us with a report suggesting this is where this money is best spent, then we could, you know, make some decisions.
I think, though, if we're going to do that, we probably should get a price from all of them, in all fairness.
If I may, what I, what I've drafted here is that, uh, the Council of the Town of Petrolia directs the Director of Operations to prepare a report regarding the best use of surplus funds from what was budgeted for R1, R2.
I think that's okay. Yeah, is council all right with that? Okay, I'll ask, I'll call the vote if there's no other discussion. Again, it will come back for your final approval. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, we have another report. And again, uh, a report from Mr. Thompson, Director of Operations, regarding the 2024 capital purchase for a backhoe. I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Moved by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. Um, I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That the Council of the Town of Petrolia provide direction to the Director of Operations as reflected in the 2024 budget approval to proceed with purchasing, with, uh, with procuring the 2024 Case 580 SN tractor loader backhoe through Delta Power for the purchase price of $122,287.2 cents plus HST.
Okay, well done. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Okay, um, I'll ask for, uh, uh, any discussion from council. We'll go to Counselor O'Hara.
Oh, yeah, through you, your worship. Uh, the, are one, are we, we trading that in, or are we? I didn't quite understand. It said utilize for trade-in value.
I believe it is, but I'll ask Mr. Thompson to speak to that.
That's correct. Uh, through your worship, we're trading in our current machine, on the new machine, and they're going to give us $80,000.
$80,000 off of the 120?
Uh, that's how we arrive at the 120. So the, the list price, 257, minus the canoe discount, 7286. Um, total after discount freight, PDI, subtotal minus the trade-in is 122,287. Okay.
Okay, any other questions from council? Uh, Mr. Thompson, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, through your worship, this is the first purchase, I believe, we've made through canoe. If that's not correct, Rick, I'm sure it is.
We, we came close, uh, last summer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, uh, it, it went really well. Um, the, the local dealer, uh, just finished up, um, going through this process with the city of Sarnia on three or four tractor backhoes. Um, he came to the office, and it was, um, it was pretty slick. So, um, it was easy to, um, to work with the local dealer. And, um, there'll be something coming to council, the next council meeting, in reference to another capital purchase that we're going to same, use the same procurement, so.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Counselor Patel, sorry, did you have something you'd like to add?
Okay, through you, your worship. So it's my understanding and questions, um, prior to council that the timing, as far as a five-year expenditure also to replace the equipment as well as gives us the best value on the, uh, sorry, on the exchange as well? Is that correct on how that's done?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else from council, any other questions? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to the Parks and Recreation Facilities. We have a report from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation and Facilities, regarding the Petrolia and Enniskillan Agricultural Society Fall Fair approvals. And I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Wells, seconded by Counselor Clark. And I will ask the deputy clerk to read that motion, please.
Absolutely. The Council of the Town of Petrolia adopt the report of the Director of Parks, Recreation, and Facilities dated March 25th, 2024 regarding Petrolia and Enniskillan Agriculture Society Fall Fair approvals, and that the council approve the request to grant significant event status to the Petrolia and Enniskillan Agricultural Society Fall Fair as detailed in the report, and that the Council of the Town of Petrolia grants the Petrolia and Enniskillan Agriculture Society an exemption to the NOISE bylaw 61 of 2020, uh, 2009 for the fall fair as detailed in the report, and that the clerk be directed to produce confirmation of the same, uh, for application to the AGCO.
Okay, any discussion from council? This is something we usually do every year. If not, all those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. We'll go on to the next item from Mrs. Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation Facilities, regarding the Mobile Concession Vehicle Services in Bridgeton Park. And I'll ask for a move in a second to put that on the floor for discussion. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Patel. seconded by Counselor Patel. I'll ask the clerk to, Deputy Clerk to read that motion, please.
That the council of the town of Petrolia adopt the report of the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regarding the mobile concession vehicle services, Bridgeview Park, and that the council of the town of Petrolia direct the director, direct the Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities to repost the request for proposal for, uh, mobile concession vehicle services, Bridgeview Park, in a paper format with a minimum bid of three thousand five hundred per season.
Do, any questions from council? Counselor Wells?
Um, just, I'm wondering if that had to go through the bids and tenders the first time because it falls under the seventy-five hundred dollars in the procurement bylaw?
That's a good question. I know before we had the, the set rate of five thousand, I believe. Mrs. Bullock, no one applied for that. Um, I'm not sure if that falls within that or if they can, I'll ask Mrs. Bullock to maybe to speak how we came up with the thirty-five hundred.
That's not my question. My question is, does it actually have to go on the bids and tenders? The, the website?
Yes, through you, your worship. Uh, we try to use bids and tenders wherever we
can. Usually stuff that's over seventy-five hundred or, um, fifteen thousand. Um, and we use it for this, this one. Um, however, this time we want to go out on paper just to make sure we hit all the local, smaller groups. Oh.
Okay.
Did I add anything?
Are you okay with that then?
Oh, yeah, I'm just, but did we have to go out on bids and tenders because it was under the seventy-five hundred dollar threshold? Or could we have just done it this way the first time?
Um, we, we could have, through you.
Okay, that's my question.
But, but bids and tenders is much more transparent and, uh, very formatted process.
That's a good point, though. Thank you for that, Counselor Wells. Um, I'll get back to Mrs. Bullock. Did, did we come up with that thirty-five hundred for some reason or?
Uh, the thirty-five hundred I came to just because in years prior to us having that five thousand dollar minimum bid, uh, we were at about a three thousand dollars. So I just basically went back towards where we were, uh, two summers ago.
So if no one applies, we could still go back and just open it up to the best bid? Okay. Sorry, Mr. Charleborg, go ahead.
Yes, your worship. Just to add on as well, the, for this concession, we don't have any metered water or hydro. And we've estimated it's probably a couple thousand dollars worth of water in hydro that's used per season.
And that's what we pay for?
Yeah.
He doesn't pay for that?
They don't pay for that, right?
So that would be included in his fee?
Yes.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Field.
Um, just, uh, through you, your worship, uh, with Counselor Welsh's comment, um, I just want to build on that a bit. I think bids and tender definitely is, is a good venue to go to for big projects. But like if we do the arena canteen next year, or when it comes up, like that's not a bids and tender. Nobody's going to be signed up for bids and tender that is a local vendor, somebody that's going to bring in a local business. So I think if it's written in our procurement policy, we need to take a look at how we're doing that. Cause bids and tenders, yes, for large contracts, you know, contractors in the area definitely use bids and tenders. But if we're looking for somebody to open a fry truck in the park, or look after a canteen, or I just don't want bids and tenders to be that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. There is still some advantage of keeping it transparent, I guess, but I understand your point. Um, Counselor Patel.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. Are we not hoping to expand this to offer more people to put forth a tender that we have in the past so that we have more options than we have? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hyatt.
So my, my question is really related to the, the location. Like, I know it's a great location, but it floods. People gotta move in and out. Is there, like, flexibility in where the location of the food truck can actually be placed? Like, I'm thinking the YMCA, once you've got soccer pitches and you've got splash pads and other venues, would that location be more applicable to a food truck if we want to have a food truck in that venue? So can it be a, a split location? Does it always have to be set in one location?
Now, I'll let Mrs. Bullock speak to that, but I think the bylaw just has the specific location. Is that correct?
Through your worship, yeah, the bylaws always just had the specific location, and it, uh, has just always remained at the park. Last summer was definitely an anomaly in the, the amount of water, the flooding we had in the summer months. Um, but we did figure that we could move them to the arena parking lot with the permission of the agricultural society if that should happen again.
I think that would be a good idea. That makes it fair to do that. And again, he does go to different special events that if they laid them up as part of different special events. All right, um, any other questions?
I did read that motion, but I'm happy to read it again if you'd like.
Is council okay with that, or do you want the motion read again?
It's okay.
Okay, all right. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. That'll move us on to administration. We have a report from Ms. Jessica Smith, Deputy Clerk.
We still have one more, sorry, from, uh, from Ms. Julie Bullock. See there?
Oh, for the truck, sorry.
Trucks, correct.
Thank you for that. Yes, we have a report from Julie Bullock, Director of Parks and Recreation regarding the Arena Parks Truck, RFP results for the Arena Parks Truck. And I'll ask for a move or a second to put that motion on the floor. Move by Counselor Hyatt, seconded by Counselor Welsh. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion.
That the council of the town of Petrolia adopt the report of the Director of Parks Recreation Facilities dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regarding the Arena slash Parks Truck RFP results, and that the RFP to, for the supply of one four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup truck be awarded to Finch Auto Group for the purchase of a Silverado in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents plus HST.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Clerk Smith. Just, I, I just note here too, that's not the lowest bid, but I understand the low bid did not meet the specifications. Is that correct?
That's correct, your worship. It didn't meet the specifications. It wasn't the correct year and didn't have the chrome bumpers that we were looking for.
Thank you. All right. Um, any discussion from council regarding that motion? Do you have anything else you'd like to add, Mrs. Bullock?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that? Opposed, that motion carries. Now, thank you, Deputy Clerk Smith. Keep me on the ball here. We'll move on to a report from you regarding the Committee of Adjustment March meeting. And I'll, there's a motion there. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Patel, seconded by Counselor Clark. I'll ask the Deputy Clerk to read that motion, please.
Uh, that the council of the town of Petrolia receive and file the report of the Deputy Clerk slash Human Resources Manager Jessica Smith dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regarding the March twenty twenty-four Committee of Adjustment meeting.
Any discussion from council? Counselor Wells?
I just noted that at that particular meeting, they, um, with, with respect to one of the minor variances, that the county planner had actually recommended denial of that.
That's.
Didn't mean, and I was just wondering how, what changed.
I'll ask, uh, Mrs. Smith to speak to that, but you're correct. I think they, the recommendation was not, but the committee overruled that. But I'll let you speak to that, uh, Ms. Smith.
Correct. Um, I believe, uh, part of the conversation that surrounded that was, a lot of the report was written under, um, two-point-five being the total variance, um, when realistically that was a small part of the variance for the covered porch. And the, the, um, variance for the house was actually three-point-five-seven meters, not the two-point-five. Um, so there was a bit of a difference between how the report was structured, um, overall, to deny, to deny that straight out a, as a whole. Um, so the county planner was, uh, he did communicate during the meeting that he was agreeable to allowing a four-meter variance. Um, and, uh, there was conversation surrounding if he'd, if he'd allow the four meter, um, and really the bulk of what we need is the three-point-five-seven meter, that's not, uh, a huge difference. That would actually, um, result in considerable cost, um, for, for the builders of that home to completely redo those plans, um, including some grading plans and, uh, several others that the, the committee believed, um, that for the difference in that variance of what the county would, uh, agree to with the, the four meters and three-point-five-seven being the actual bulk of the ask, um, they were comfortable going forward with that motion.
That makes sense.
That okay? Thank you. Thank you, uh, Deputy Clerk Smith. Any other discussion regarding that motion before you? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. We also have a report from Jessica Smith, Deputy Clerk, HR Manager Lottery Update for two thousand twenty-three. You have a motion before you. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Move by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the Deputy Clerk to read that motion, please.
That the council of the town of Petrolia endorse the report of the Deputy Clerk slash Human Resources Manager dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regarding the lottery update for the year two thousand twenty-three, and that the council of the town of Petrolia continue to waive the three percent license fee eligible through the provincial policy.
Any discussion from council? Ms. Smith, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. We also have a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk regarding the two thousand twenty-three vital statistics update and meeting attendance. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor for discussion, please. Counselor Clark. Would like to move seconded by Counselor Patel. And do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. Um, so the, uh, the slight amendment, um, in that, uh, document that was circulated to council today and is reflected in the motion, um, is, uh, due to a clerical error. I forgot to include one of the committees, so I recirculated that, um, to council today, and that will be what is, uh, included in the minutes. Um, I just forgot health and wellness, and I reversed, uh, an attendance and heritage. So we have circulated that to council for review and provided hard copies for review at the meeting as well. So, yes, so the motion, um, that is drafted here is that the council of the town of Petrolia receive and file the report of the Clerk Operations Clerk dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regarding the vital statistics and council meeting attendance update for two thousand twenty-three as amended to include the Health and Safety Committee.
Thank you. Any discussions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. We have a report from Mrs. Mandy Pearson, Clerk Operations Clerk regarding the two thousand twenty-three Council Remuneration and Expense Report and PSSD filing, two thousand twenty-three Council Remuneration and Expense Report. I'll ask for a move and a second to put that motion on the floor, please. Move by Count, Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Counselor Hyatt. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
That the council of the town of Petrolia receive and file the report of the Clerk slash Operations Clerk dated March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four regarding the two thousand twenty-three Council Remuneration and Expenses and Annual Public Sector Disclosure filing.
Any discussion from council? If not, uh, do you have anything you'd like to add, Ms. Smith, to that?
Nothing at this time, your worship.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. And that's something that the clerk has to do every year. That moves us on to the closed session in camera. We have nothing. That'll bring us to the second opportunity for anyone wishing to address council. I'll ask the public, is there anyone here wishing to address council at this time? If not, I'll move on then to the new unfinished business. We have new business from Counselor Patel, and I'll turn the meeting over to her. Counselor Patel, go ahead.
Thank you. And through you, your worship, um, just, um, something as a new counselor that I was, um, brought up to speed as far as the list of volunteers that are considered in our community and the absent of the Scouts Beaver Girl Guides, um, clubs that have been established in this community for a long time. Uh, I don't even know the number off by hand, but anyway, I think that they should be added to the volunteer list. This is, um, clubs that have been operated with volunteers since the beginning of time. And, uh, I think that they, it's, uh, amiss that they're not included.
Yeah, I will speak to that. And I know I sent you an email on March the first, but I do want to advise council that we do put some thought into that. We try and keep it to volunteers that are directly related to the town. For example, service clubs aren't allowed, and there's all kinds of organizations that have volunteers. But I'll certainly take it under advisement, but I want you to know that it's a very difficult, uh, position to do. Um, and, uh, as I say, we're limited to the amount of room. We usually fill the legion, and it's, uh, it's, it's a difficult to pick it. But I do want to mention, for example, Earl Oliver, who's been involved with Scouts for years, he did receive an award a few years ago. So we have considered them before, but I'll certainly take that under advisement. Thank you. Counselor Wells?
I'm just wondering if through you, if it's something maybe the youth advisory could do is, is come up with some sort of a recognition for groups that specifically work with youth, and they could recognize them.
Yeah, we still have a.
How that would look, but just throwing it out there.
Yeah. We do have a system in place, but I would certainly welcome any, any recommendations you may have to send it to, to send it to me, and we'll look at that. Counselor O'Hara.
Yeah, uh, through you, your worship. I think it's something we'd be pretty careful. If, if we start inviting all the volunteers, you've got minor hockey, a lot of volunteers in minor hockey, uh, minor soccer, service clubs, and the list just goes on and on and on for the amount. We're very lucky to have such dedicated volunteers. But boy, oh, boy, if you're going to open it up to one special group, I'd be nervous about that.
Yeah, we've thought about, uh, doing the same thing as what the mayor of Sarnia does, having a recognition of, say, the ten or twenty people. But I think we would do more harm than good in a small town because I hate to leave somebody out who's already a good volunteer. And as Counselor O'Hara said, it's a difficult process because we have volunteers in all different types of organizations. But I'll certainly consider it, think about it. And I don't have a problem with the youth committee making a recommendation on some that they may have. Counselor Patel.
Through you, and I, I don't know how this works for the meeting tonight as far as further discussion, but maybe we need to revisit what we currently have is how we choose the volunteers. And maybe we have a public vote, um, that includes all the volunteers across the board. So it lets the, the public have a, you know, an option to, to weigh in or appoint or, or suggest something just as a recognition. I don't think it has to be elaborate. I think just a, an acknowledgement of some sort of all the different variations of volunteers we have across the community.
I have a concern for that. I think the process we have works, and I'd like to keep that same process. Counselor Clark?
Um, just from my personal, uh, recollection, I guess, would be the term. The recognizing the volunteers never been limited to people that are volunteering for the town. Like you said, Mr. Oliver's been recognized in the past. The, um, the dinner format has been limited to the town volunteers as a way of the town showing back the appreciation to those volunteers. But I don't believe that recog, the recognition portion of that has been limited to town volunteers, right? Um, Heidi Soudan was just recently recognized, and her involvement was more with the community refrigerator than as a town volunteer.
But I think she's done things for the town and the theater for us as well.
Right.
But it is, again, I think we could certainly look at increasing it. I know the numbers are limited, but I still think the system works. And I'm still concerned about hurting the feelings of others maybe that aren't selected. I think we should leave things in place the way it works. Um, Mrs. Ellsworth, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Um, thank you, your worship. I can clarify, I guess, a little bit to follow up on Counselor Clark's comments that, yes, indeed, uh, the dinner's always been focused on those that contribute to the town. Um, started with committees of council, um, and then specific volunteers related to the activities of, of the town, um, including Victoria Playhouse and, you know, if Public Works had volunteers, that sort of thing, but also, you know, our committees. Uh, so it's always been a core group of people, um, that if each and every person attended the dinner, that is a volunteer specific to the town, under the umbrella of the committees or under Victoria Playhouse, as an example, the volunteers, um, we invite over two hundred and fifty people. Uh, the legion has a, a capacity that's nowhere near that, unfortunately. Um, so we've never actually been able to include a partner or a spouse or someone. Uh, so that's where we are a bit limited. Um, also budgetary reasons, of course. Um, however, uh, to Counselor Clark's point, and that's exactly correct, it has never limited a recipient. So what we look for in a recipient, and, uh, you know, it comes in at us from all angles, actually, um, is involvement in many aspects of the community. So it doesn't matter if it's for the town or not, but we always include a piece of, of what they do benefiting the town in some way. Um, service clubs, uh, groups, organizations, um, even those. even those quiet volunteers that do things like the community refrigerator, food saving, things like that. So we try to look for those well-rounded human beings that give a lot of themselves to many organizations. And interestingly, each year, the list gets more challenging as we review them and say, oh, I think we already gave that person one. So it does come down to space at the Legion particularly, and it does come down to finances to cover the meal. But as far as the awards go, we tell some really good stories to get those other volunteer folks in with us so that we can award them without their knowing ahead of time, if that helps.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellsworth. And I think, too, there were only, I believe, two or two counselors, two or three counselors that attended. I think the other counselors need to come out and see what happens and what's going on, and you'd have a little bit of appreciation for it as well. Deputy Mayor Field.
I just want to, a couple of comments through you. The Counselor Clark and Mrs. Ellsworth just said, I think I've attended every volunteer dinner since I've been on council and before that as a volunteer. And I agree that my recollection of how we started it was to recognize our town, acknowledge our town volunteers by giving them a dinner, and then having community awards that were for everyone. And I think of the people that have been awarded over the years. You know, I think we've hit a lot of people, Diane Odell, Mary Pat Gleason, I think in her memory. But there's been people for everything that have volunteered, and we acknowledge them, but we have an audience of our town volunteers that have been there. I think it is a good format that we have. I hope that we would take into consideration every organization and every person. And the people that are recognized are very recognizable because of what they do in our community. When we name off one of them, there's five organizations that they belong to. There's six, seven organizations. And then there's the people that are in the back rooms at the Legion. You know, it was great this year because there was one that was acknowledged for that. I just think that we do have a really good format. I encourage everyone to come to it as well. I think it has always been well-received, and you're right, it is hard to get some people that wouldn't normally come to it to come and be recognized. And we've chased them for a year, you know? I'm pretty good with what we're doing right now, but I really, I know that there's a big pot of people that they look at and that Larissa brings forward and you look at, so...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. And again, it almost gets to the point at times we try and pick someone that we haven't already picked before. That's the other bit of a challenge. But anyway, I just invite council, if you haven't gone out to see it, come and see the format. I think you'd be pleased. Is there anything else, Counselor Patel? Can we move on then? All right. We'll go on to the bylaws. I'll, we've got two bylaws. I'll ask for a motion to have the bylaws read a first and second time.
Before we do that, sorry, we have one slight amendment to, it's a wording change. We received an email from County Bylaw Enforcement this morning with a recommendation for the insertion of about five words in Section 4, Paragraph 1. So it currently reads that the BLEO officer is required to attend the property in accordance in order to conduct an inspection, determine the validity of the complaint and its nonconformance with the municipal standards. What we need to insert there is the BLEO officer is required to attend the property in order to conduct an inspection, determine the validity of the complaint, and/or to suit proactive enforcement and its conformance with the municipal standards.
All right, so if it's all right, and I did have that note, thank you, Deputy Clerk Smith. I think, let's get a motion to read it a first and second time, then we'll deal with them separately as amended. Okay, moved by Counselor Welsh, seconded by Counselor O'Hara, that the bylaws be read a first and second time. All those in favor? That's carried. So then we will deal with them a third time separately. Is that correct?
So what the clerk had recommended to me was we actually deal with them separately the first and second time. But she said we could also do a catch-all after, if that's how you'd like to proceed.
I do. Leave the first and second alone, we'll go to the third, and we'll deal with them separately. So for the third one, we'll have, I'll need a move and a second to do just the first motion, and that's, and then I'll have her read that regarding bylaw enforcement. So I'll need a move and a second for that. Moved by Deputy Mayor Field, seconded by Clark. I'll ask the Deputy Clerk to read that motion, please, which is 17 of 2024.
That bylaw 17 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to provide for the adoption of the policy and procedures for bylaw enforcement and inspections of all forms on properties in relation to the enforcement of bylaws in the Town of Petrolia be read a third and final time and finally passed as amended.
Any questions from council? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, have a question? Go ahead.
All right. So I went back to reference the old bylaw, which I believe was 29 of 2020.
Speak right into the mic, please, so we can hear you. Thanks.
When I referenced that one, it also talked about a property standards officer. So is that position now obsolete and replaced by the bylaw enforcement officer?
I'll ask the Deputy Clerk to speak to that, please.
Yep. So, yes, they're essentially one of the same. Now, it's all done, property standards and bylaw enforcement is all done through the County of Lampton. So the property standards piece is actually from another bylaw, and that would stand as is. This would be the catch-all for the enforcement of any of those bylaws that the County of Lampton oversees for us. And that is to also allow for the proactive enforcement that was passed with the budget.
The property standards officer is not doing proactive enforcement?
The property standards officer and the bylaw enforcement officer are one of the same.
We don't need to update the bylaw related specifically to property standards officer?
Correct. This would supersede the enforcement piece of both of those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, I'll call the, or I'll have, did you read that motion? Sorry.
I did, yes.
Okay. I'll ask council, where was voting on the first bylaw? All those in favor of approving that bylaw? Opposed, that bylaw carries. I'll need a motion for the mop-up confirming bylaw. A move is moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please. Deputy Clerk?
Yep, that is that bylaw number, that's okay. I know what you mean. That bylaw number 18 of 2024, being a bylaw of the Corporation of the Town of Petrolia to confirm resolutions and motions of the Council of the Town of Petrolia, which were adopted up to and including March 25th, 2024, be read a third time and finally passed.
All those in favor of that motion? Opposed, that motion carries. And I'll need a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. All those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
I'll try to remember, Deputy Clerk.